Welcome, everybody, to our regular board meeting Tuesday, October 15th, 2024, a little after seven. Call to order: we have a declaration of quorum, six members present. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. Bring us to... Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make discussions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time, requires us to listen rather than take action, so it's to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We're pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest and support of our students. I'll bring us to recognitions, and I think we have all of our high schools here tonight.
Sorry.
You're good. So, good evening. My name is Chris Sutherid. I'm the very proud principal of College View High School, and it's my honor to introduce students from all three of our high schools, College U, Consolidated, and CSHS, to lead us in our pledges. So, guys, come on up, introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit about yourself, your school, and then lead us in our pledges tonight.
Hello. My name is Lauren Wrightmeyer, and one thing I love about College View is all of the dual credit opportunities I have.
My name is Noah Sims. I'm a junior at CVHS and the vice president, vice president of Skills USA, and I enjoy the dual credit classes they have to offer and the CTE programs that I'm a part of.
Howdy. My name is Sam Agiri. I'm a junior at College Station High School, and one thing that I like about CSHS are all the opportunities that our school has to offer, and some of those activities that I'm involved in are FFA, FCA, and Gen Now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Laney Cozy. I'm currently a senior at College Station High School. I'm involved in track, NHS, and Student Council, where I'm currently the student body president. And one of my favorite things about CSHS is the community and culture fostered through the staff and the students.
Hi. My name's Jessie Schwartz. I'm the captain of the A&amp;M Consolidated Bingle Bells, and one thing I love about CONSOL is the character and the originality of the school, and that's what sets it apart from others.
Hi. My name is Stella Bales. I'm a senior, and I'm student body president at CONSOL. I'm also in MSA, Vet Med, FFA, and the Environmental and Natural Sciences Club. I love CONSOL because I love all of the different opportunities, and especially the CTEs, like the Vet Med team, and right now I'm a Vet Med student, and I go to West Brazos Clinics to work there.
Will everybody please stand and join us for the United States pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for our Texas pledge.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please remain, please remain standing for a moment of silence.
You may be seated.
So, Mr. Horak, members of the board, and distinguished guests, it is Mr. Grimes' honor to recognize the 14 CSISD seniors who have shown outstanding academic abilities by being confirmed as semifinalists in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. The recognition allows these academically... My bad. The recognition allows these academically talented students to continue in the competition for approximately 6,870 National Merit Scholarships worth $26 million. So, students, when I call your name, please come to the front to receive your certificate from Dr. Harkrider and allow the board to recognize you for your achievement. So, the first one is Dev Kumar Banerjee. He scored a perfect score on the PSAT. We have Jack Carter. Jack also scored a perfect score on the PSAT. We have Luke Moore. Ash Kosh Argawal. Giancarlo Valaderas. And Christina Yum.
My name is Justin Grimes, and I'm the proud principal of College Station High School. If I could get all of our CSHS honorees to start moving to my left, your right, I will call you up one at a time. So, this is our National Merit semifinalist from College Station High School. We have Luke Chang. Next, we have Miriam Dimlow. Edward Zhao. And last, but certainly not least, Joyce Zhang. At this time, guys, if you will line up so they can take a picture. All right, one more round of applause. Thank you. Congratulations, guys. In addition to our semifinalists, 25 CSISD seniors have been designated commended students by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation in recognition of their outstanding ability and potential for academic success in college. These academically talented students are among more than two-thirds, approximately 34,000, of high scores on the preliminary SAT slash National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. Students, when I call your name, please come to the front, and again, receive your certificate from Dr. Harkrider, allow the board to recognize you, and then you will hang around for the picture at the end. Again, College Station High School honorees, if you will start moving to the outer edge, I will call your name. From College Station High School, Swari Akheli. And I don't believe these other members could join us tonight, but I'm going to recognize them anyway. We have Seth Boivie. Alan Lee. Arun Muthukumar. Bowen Tian. Pulin Zhu. And David Toussaint.
Okay, now for CONSOL. So, we have Lucas Perkins. And then we have Andrew Benavides. David Zhang. Justin Palazola. Kevin Yang. Megan Rasmussen. Michelle Harry. Noah Kim. Riley Matheson. Samuel Sayre. Sherwin Goheel. Sophia Mackenplanki. Tate Jasperson. And William Ferris. Okay, at this time, we'll take a photo.
All right, so it's now my honor to recognize some of our staff members, so I can have my Wolfpack members come on up, please. So, first, we have, we'll start with Lori Rath here. Lori is our dean of students, which means she does everything that's not assigned to me, and so that's a lot more than I do, actually. She is the heartbeat of College U High School. She is our counselor. She is our registrar. She is our testing coordinator. She's our 504 coordinator. She keeps me sane a lot of the time. She does a lot of things, and she's been at College U since it's the place opened. She has a true heart for the kids. There's no way that school exists or functions without her and her work and the heart and soul that she pours into the kids, and so I wanted to recognize her for everything that she does to help me and our kids and our school at College U. And then we have Ms. Chrissy Wallace. Ms. Wallace, also kind of a jack-of-all-trades. She's our PE coach, teaches Foods 101, teaches an economics class on money use, but she also, one of the things I think that's most important, is she helps coordinate our accelerated academy, and that's a place where kiddos that have, for whatever reason, have fallen behind and need a chance to catch up, go and get a chance to graduate high school, and she works with them and makes sure that they stay on pace. We have already graduated five kiddos this year from our accelerated academy at College U High School. That's a lot of that is due to the work of Ms. Chrissy Wallace and what she pours into those kids, things they would not have had the opportunity to do without her guidance, and so we want to recognize her for that. And then finally, we have Ms. Sarah Prince. So, I don't know if you guys know this or not, but sometimes when working with kids, they make mistakes. I don't know if you guys knew that or not. And so Sarah is one of our DAP teachers, and she is phenomenal. All of our, all of our DAP staff is great, but working with kids that have sometimes made mistakes, and so they come to us, and what, one thing I love about Sarah is it doesn't matter what that kiddo's done or what their past is, she loves them and is dedicated to get them back on track, has a true heart for the kids, and those kids probably need more love than anybody else in the district, and so we're excited to have her and what she does, and really, all three of these ladies for everything they do at College U and the DAP. So, while our Cougar family members are making their way up here, I'm just going to tell y'all right now, none of these people want this recognition, which is one of the things that I'm going to talk about, which is why they're here tonight, because they're so special. So, the people that I invited tonight are our entire office staff, paraprofessionals that serve in every capacity, that take care of kids and adults in our building. They have one of the toughest but hardest jobs. For those of you who are here at our workshop this evening, you heard Ms. Wilson talking about the programs and the, and the money, if you will, and every single one of these members up here are responsible for all of the programs and the platforms and the data and the metrics that go into all of these records that are so valuable, but more importantly, these people are the reason that our kids come to school, because these are the faces that the kids are seeing in the offices before they get to us, and so I want to make sure I recognize each one of them individually, and yes, I told you I wasn't going to make you talk, but I am, but don't worry, don't worry. I'm just going to ask you one word that makes CSHS special. So, I'm going to start with our lead nurse, Ms. Dugan, and there are times that she has served our campus over 2,000 students by herself, and she's got it all, and she's incredible, and I want to make sure that she was recognized tonight. One word, CSHSTU.
Family.
Then we have in our attendance office, we have our two ladies who are responsible for 2,000 kids and all their notes and making sure they're accounted for when they're sick, all the, all the things, right? And our two attendance ladies, we have Jamie Linsley and we have Lisa Burlison. One word.
Family.
Unique.
Outstanding. Used to be in the attendance office, has transitioned into our counseling office, and she now serves as our 504 coordinator, also a CSHS mom, actually, several of these, I should have mentioned that, I apologize, Missy Sanders.
Courage.
Courage. All right, very good. I'm going to stay in our counseling office, and we're going to go to our, she does everything so ensures that our kids get information about scholarships, and she takes care of our counseling team, and that is Ms. Gina Knott.
I would say teamwork.
Teamwork. Then we're going to go to the AP office, which can seem like organized chaos, and most days it is, but the reason it's organized is because of this team right here, and I'm going to start with one of our new additions. She is a CSHS, CSHS graduate and has come back to serve our family. She is our textbook coordinator, and that is Elise Loopstra.
Family.
I'm going to skip you for now. Staying in the counseling office, we're going to go to our counselor secretary, and that is Ms. Laura Lydicote.
Community.
Our registrar, I'll, I'll keep saying the hardest job in the building, I don't know which one it is, but our registrar, who meets with every single of our 2,000 families and gets them registered, get, make sure that they have a warm welcome, and that is Ms. Dee Dee Sterrett.
Carrying.
Continuing in our AP office, our AP office secretary, substitute coordinator, slash, 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 all the things, we have Ms. Jamie Wiesapapi and Stephanie Bell.
Supported. Unity.
And last, but certainly not least, the person that has to put up with me every single day, and that is my administrative assistant, careful with your one word, Shay. That is Ms. Shay DeBarry.
Resilient.
All right. This team is incredible. I wanted to make sure they got the honor and recognition they deserve. Thank y'all for being here. Thank y'all for how you serve our Cougar family, and I love you guys. Oh, you almost let me forget, didn't I? We have our bookkeeper. Our bookkeeper's new with us this year. She has all of the money from everybody in the whole building. She's responsible, and her and our, our team on that, and that is Ms. Heather Berger.
Purple.
Purple, there you go. I apologize. So, this is our team, our Cougar family. Thank you, ladies. Love y'all very much. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Take a picture. Do you like me in?
Okay, at this time, this has been a secret for these young ladies, and so at this time, I would like our special education instructional assistants, if you guys will come up, you So, we have Jennifer Rogers, who is our in-class support. We have Patricia Briscoe, who is also in-class support. We have Doris Roberson, who is in Strive. We have Rita Harrison, who is also works in Strive, and then we have Tay Gooden, who also works in Strive, and we have Denise and Kathy Coleman, who they were unable to be with us tonight. And so I struggle with this, and those of you who know me, I love to write, and so I wrote something special for them, and it's going to be, it's framed that you'll get afterwards. Okay, so CONSOL Special Education IAs are one of a kind. No matter what challenges they face, they always find ways to help our students shine. I notice how they can change the mindset of students who lack confidence to help them believe they consistently go the extra mile to help our students achieve. They support bathroom needs, feed students, work with individuals or small groups, and so much more. Doing whatever it takes is a mentality they adore. They have supervised students both inside and outside the classroom and on field trips, too. Reassuring a safe and supportive environment exists is the most important thing they do. CONSOL's SPED IAs have a remarkable willingness to learn and improve their job performance each and every day. Their commitment, flexibility, and passion for serving CONSOL are truly amazing, if I must say. I applaud their interactions with students, teachers, and others in the learning community. They are driven to enrich our students' learning experiences and capitalize on every opportunity. Continue to keep the students at the forefront of everything you do. CONSOL is so blessed to have each and every one of you, and so you know I love y'all.
All right. Here, we can smile.
All right, so tonight, we also want to recognize a couple of people from our auxiliary department. First off is, in our custodial department, CJ Tipton. CJ is the head custodian at Rock Prairie Elementary. He started with the district in September of 2020, was recently promoted to our head custodian in March of '24 there. The Rock Prairie staff has emphasized that CJ works hard to keep the campus safe, clean, and does a fantastic job of communicating with the staff and letting them know what's going on. So, thank you, CJ, for all your hard work and dedication to Rock Prairie Elementary and College Station IAS, too. Make sure I get these in order this time, and, no, stay up here. And secondly, I also want to recognize Ray Chase. Ray is in our grounds department and is currently our spray technician. You've probably seen him around the various campuses throughout the year, but Ray started with the district in August of 2021 and has consistently demonstrated his commitment to teamwork by readily assisting his colleagues wherever extra help is needed. It is not uncommon to find Ray in a hole with the irrigation guys or whatever else is needed with that department, but thank you, Ray, for going above and beyond and all of your hard work in keeping the grounds at College Station looking nice for students. Give them certificates, and also thank E3 and our Education Foundation for graciously giving them a gift card as well for all their hard work. So, thank you.
My name's Chuck Longwell. I'm the driver supervisor with transportation. We also wanted to recognize our employee of the month, Ms. Stephanie Meek. Stephanie came to us about a year and a half ago, but we knew her long before that, driving her students, or her, her children on the buses. Stephanie came in, she got all the training done, and then she became one of our special leads drivers, and I think she was expecting a nice, easy year, but the programs had moved over the summer, and she didn't know that. She started out with a handful of kids, and then she came and saw, came to see me about every other day for two or three weeks, getting a new kid every time, and her route just kept growing and growing and growing, to the point where we nearly had to split it, and when we did, we said, okay, well, we're going to split here, and then these kids are going to go to this other bus. Well, I don't want to lose those kids. Okay, then we'll go the other way, and the other bus will get these other kids. I don't want to lose them either. So, we ended up not splitting the route last year. She did end up making it work, and to this day, Stephanie has been a smile in the building, always willing to do whatever needs done, and I'm just very, very thankful we have her. So, thanks to E3 and Education Foundation again for a gift certificate, and then you also have a fancy parking spot out at the building.
We may have to get Mr. Horak some water and a fan. He is struggling to stay up this long, so I apologize. I did not prepare them. We'll have to be in better shape next month. So, we need to drop the AC. One of the highlights that we started last year were our staff recognitions, and that's very important to me. Those men and women that were recognized tonight are many times behind the scenes, but there is a group that is always behind the scenes, and they provide our recognitions, and this is October is Principal's Recognition Month. I probably recognize them more than they want to, and they get to see me every month, but they are a wonderful group, so I'd like to ask all of our principals and assistant principals to please stand. I don't believe once a month is near enough to recognize these men and women who do a wonderful job leading our kids.
wonderful job leading our kids and our staff members each and every day. They're there early, they stay late, Saturdays, Sundays, it really doesn't matter. It's whatever the job entails they're willing to do. They are what makes our school district special. So we're very thankful for you, all of our principals. We're gonna call your name. We have something for you. And then also, there will be a special delivery for all of our principals and APs later this week, and that's all I was told to tell, or I'm gonna get in trouble. So at this time, we'll recognize our principals. Thank you.
We will begin with our elementary principals, Ms. Mindy Chappa. Mr. Jeff Duran. Mr. Mike McKeever. Mrs. Teresa Cott. Mrs. Amanda Allen. Mrs. Donna Barrington. Mrs. Ally Deluna. Mrs. Heather Sherman. And Mrs. Laura Richter. Now to our secondary principals. Mr. Justin Grimes. Mrs. Gwen Elder. Mr. Chris Southard. Mr. Omar Espethia. Mr. Jeremy Stewart. Mr. Josh Rhine. Mr. Rocco Grandi. Mrs. Piper Cameron. And Mrs. Brittany Kane could not be here, but we definitely want to recognize. Principals, as you look at your frame, these words of appreciation, love, and support are from your staff members. It took some emailing on Mrs. Leifer's part to not include you. It was very hard on technology's part to exclude you because you're a part of every email group, but these are words that come from the heart, from your staff members, that you support, develop, and love every day. They love you as well. We value you. We appreciate what you do for every campus, for all faculty members, and for our childrens in CSISD. Thank you.
Bring us to item C5, CSHS PLC update.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kelly Banker, and I am one of the assistant principals at College Station High School. Very excited to be here. Ally Kenny and I have the opportunity to speak to y'all about our PLC update. So first of all, thank you to the board, Dr. Harkrider, all the cabinet for giving us the opportunity to go to Solution Tree Institute, Summer Institute in Fort Worth this summer. We had an amazing four days together. Not gonna lie, I would say that we were all a little hesitant on what is this we're about to get into, but afterwards, we were true believers. That's one of the words that Solution Tree uses, but by the time we walked away, we definitely were believers. And there are about three words that are themes that kind of came up to me as I was thinking and reflecting upon this, and those are collaboration, instruction, and time. What this PLC, or actually, I'm gonna kind of step back. We call it 4002, because College Station High School, we like to do things our Cougar way. And so 4002 Victoria is where the high school is located, but really what it means is 4002, so all students, it's everybody. And so it doesn't matter if it's a student, if it's a staff member, whoever that is, we represent everybody. And so we call our PLCs 4002s. So anyways, the 4002s, the collaborating that is able to take place, where the teachers and even staff members and just everything that happens with the collaboration. And for me, as an administrator, I feel like I've become more of an instructional leader this year, which is amazing, because that's something, not always having to deal with discipline, but being able to be that instructional leader is powerful. And then also time. We restructured our Wynn schedule while we were at Fort Worth, and with that, we now have a captured 32 minutes every single day where teachers, staff members, counselors, administrators can work with students on interventions, on extensions. We do assemblies. That's when we do Character Strong. So it is a time where every student is in the building, and we are able to work with them. We want our students to be involved and engaged and belonging to a group or athletics or organization, which they are, so that makes before-school and after-school difficult, but this is a time where we capture everybody. So that's on the administrator side, but I'm gonna turn it over.
Hi, my name is Ally Kenny, and I have the privilege of serving as a social studies teacher at CSHS, and I'm also the social studies department chair. And even before I knew that I was gonna get to come, like, talk about PLC and how much we're loving it, I actually sent out a survey to our social studies teachers, and the results were just overwhelming of how much we are appreciating time to collaborate together. It's protected time on our campus, so we have a period every day where that is our priority, is getting together with our colleagues that we respect, and we have the time to sit down and do what we love best, which is to ensure that we are being the best that we can be for our kids and ensuring quality first-time instruction. And so just having that time has been such a gift. It's truly a gift. And the other thing that we are doing is we have, like Dr. Banker said, our Wynn time every day with all of our kids, so we have access to all of our kids anytime that we are seeing that they need intervention or extension, and being able to have the time and a system in place to make sure that we are capturing those kids immediately and not at the end of like an assessment cycle is really, I mean, it's only been nine weeks, and I can tell you that it's making a huge difference. And we're really, really excited to see how far we can continue to push and sustain this model. So thank you, guys, for the opportunity for Fort Worth and just supporting and believing in this system.
Thank y'all. C6, we want to recognize the artwork at the back of our boardroom here, because we've got quite a bit from CSISD Head Start kiddos, and then all three of our high schools are represented back there. So quite a few artistic students that we have here at CSISD. Bring us to item D1, Board Report. Who'd like to go first?
Head Start. Policy council met. It was a great event Ms. Rice put on. Got everybody fired up for the new year. They adopted new policies and procedures and elected campus reps for the different committees. It was great to see the involvement and the engagement, and I really like what they're gonna do.
DEIC met. We had a great presentation on our Title I campuses, and we also talked again about the calendar and looked at calendars of similar districts and communities around us, and kind of realized we're all kind of on the same page, but started talking about the planning and everything that's gonna go into it, so there will be more information coming up.
There's always a lot going on with Education Foundation, and today is Brazos Valley Gives, so I'm sure a lot of you have seen some of your nonprofits out there today asking you to give, but it does not close until 11:00 PM. So Education Foundation has a deal going that for every $25 that you donate to them through Brazos Valley Gives, you have a chance to win $2,500 for your campus. So you can go to brazosvallegives.org until 11:00 tonight.
Not a committee meeting, but I did want to extend what we discussed about earlier at our workshop and just remind everybody that we vote soon, that it's right around the corner, right? The election day is November 5th, but early voting starts on October 21st, so that's soon. And, you know, right now, there's a lot of opportunities locally to learn about our local candidates, including our state legislators that we talked about, who really make a lot of our decisions in Austin. And, you know, we have both House District 12 and House District 14 that cover some parts of our school district. And, you know, there's a forum this Saturday from the League of Women Voters, and next week, I think on Monday, is the one from the chamber. So a couple of opportunities to hear from those folks if you haven't already.
Anything else? Dr. Harkrider.
All righty, next couple of weeks, we've got several firsts taking place. I believe this Friday is our first Campus Trustee Tour. We will be at Cypress Grove at 9:00 AM, and I know Piper Cameron and her staff are excited about welcoming you guys to their campus and showing you around, especially to the renovations next year and the great things our staff's doing. On October 21st, Krista and Austin put together our first coffee chat, and so that's an opportunity in a casual setting at 1:00 that day. We will have our Curriculum and Instruction Department will be on hand to give a brief presentation and answer any questions community members or parents may have with the direction of our CNI program. October 28th, last spring, we did a lunch and learn with our community leaders that we invited to come up, and we gave a presentation on our 2024 bond election. We told them at that time that would be something we would do on a regular basis two times a year. So our first one for the 24-25 school year will be October 28th at 11:30. Be kind of a state-of-the-district initiatives that we have going, things that we're looking down the pipe from, a little bit about legislation, and so several items will be on that. And then on November 6th will be our first Teacher Advisory Council meeting. We changed our PAT committee from last year and turned it into a Teacher Advisory Council. This will be a group of teachers. There's one from each campus that we will get feedback on, on current initiatives, get their feedback on the direction for future planning and things that we have. One thing in particular will be curriculum that we'll discuss with them at our second meeting, I believe is in February. So it's a chance to get feedback from these individuals, not necessarily giving us feedback from campuses. We want their expert opinion on what we're doing and feedback on how we can do better and things that we need to consider in the future. So that committee will meet three times this upcoming year.
All right. That'll bring us to item D2, receive a report on board member continuing education credit. So we do this every year. Usually coincides with the Tasby Conference. Annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member under the State Board of Education rule. President shall cause the minutes of the local board to reflect the information. Six of the College Station ISD trustees have met or exceeded the required hours of continuing education as of the first anniversary of the date of each board member's election or appointment to the College Station ISD Board of Trustees. Vice President Darren Payne, Dr. Darren Payne, has been deployed overseas and will continue to work on his required training hours as time allows. Place two, trustee Blaine Decker, completed. Secretary Josh Ben, place three, completed. President Jeff Horak, place four, exceeded. Did y'all hear that? Trustee Kimberly McAdams, place five, completed. Trustee Kim Aggie, place six, completed. Trustee Heather Simmons, place seven, completed. Great job, everybody.
I demand a recount.
Now, hey, I appreciate it, y'all, because in addition to what we do, and, you know, lo and behold to the public, the one meeting a month that we have in all of our other duties, this, especially for our new board members, that's a lot of hours. So I appreciate the dedication in getting those done. So all it does is help our school district and help our teachers and students going forward. Bring us to item E, Hearing of Citizens. I believe we have some for tonight for the board meeting. During this time, we will hear from citizens who registered to speak prior to the meeting in accordance with board operating procedures. The Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers regarding items not on the agenda. Comments related to the items on the agenda may be discussed during deliberations on that specific agenda item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity. The microphone, regardless of minutes used, unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. Executive Assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The board asks that those addressing the board refrain from any derogatory comments. Our first speaker is Luke Bales.
And we're gonna speak right here. Hi, my name is Luke Bales, a resident of College Station ISD. I'm in ninth grade and am part of a classical co-op group called Classical Conversations. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I spoke at the school board meeting in May, and is for the same reason that I come again tonight. The reason being that I wish to be able to participate in UIL events, something that homeschoolers cannot do. Instead, we form our own sports clubs that often do not have enough participants due to smaller numbers. This is why I am here tonight. I am not here for myself, but for all homeschoolers in this school district. Now, there are numerous reasons us homeschoolers should be able to participate in UIL sanctioned events, three of which I will lay out for you tonight. First, as you all know, in 2021, the Texas Legislature passed House Bill 547, which gives local school districts the power to decide whether homeschool students, such as myself, are allowed to compete in UIL sports. Since then, over 40 school districts have allowed homeschoolers to participate, including similar-sized districts like Tyler and Abilene. Of course, I haven't even mentioned the 35 states that allow this, most of which have more free access and statewide allowances than Texas. The choice to allow homeschoolers to compete in UIL is up to you, as school board meetings members to decide. And since so many other districts have made this decision, I would urge you to put yourself on the inclusive side of history. The second reason you should allow homeschoolers to participate in UIL events is that we pay thousands of dollars of taxes to the public school system each year. Approximately $15,000 is spent per public school student each year in Texas, which adds to about $65 million of property taxes. Even though homeschool families pay the same taxes, they get no benefit from it, not even a chance to compete in public sports. Is this really fair? If homeschool families pay school taxes, shouldn't they at least be able to participate in a small portion of public school, like sports or music? My third reason that you should allow homeschool students to participate in UIL events is that we will contribute to the team. There are hard-working homeschoolers who want to and will benefit College Station sports teams if only you would allow them to. Currently, I know at least one member of the Aggie football team played for a private school while being homeschooled. Just think about the possibilities if this player had been allowed to contribute to his public school team. I hope that the College Station ISD board members will at the very least put House Bill 547 on next month's agenda and hopefully vote to let homeschoolers like me participate in UIL sanctioned events. Thank you.
Next is Tilly Schlegel.
Good evening. My name is Tilly Schlegel, and I am a resident in College Station ISD. As you may remember, a few months ago, I was here to address the UIL policy concerning athletics. You may remember I play softball, and this season, there are only four other teams in my league, because most players left for their public high school team. I am now a freshman in high school, and girls my age are leaving all the local teams to play for their public high schools. This means that all the talented players like pitchers leave a small number of teams, making it harder for homeschoolers on the city league teams to play competitive games. I would like to play for my local public high school. Since I am homeschooled, you can picture how overjoyed I was when Texas Since I am homeschooled, you can picture how overjoyed I was when Texas passed a law, House Bill 547, to include homeschoolers like me on a public school team. Other cities in Texas like Wimberly have eagerly let homeschoolers on their teams. Why is College Station any different? As I stated last time, the only thing I need to fulfill this dream is your vote. I am here to remind you of my two main reasons to welcome homeschoolers to your teams. First, home high school, sports teams could gain valuable players. Second, your teams could gain hard-working, disciplined, and responsible players. But I think you should know why we homeschool. My parents homeschool my siblings and I, not because they don't trust public school teachers, but because homeschooling is a better fit for us. Public schoolers and homeschoolers are friends, not enemies. We are all residents of College Station. The difference is our education. There are pros and cons to both schooling methods. Every person is different, but all people are equal. Although homeschoolers and public schoolers in high school have slightly different educations, they should be included equally. Homeschooling does not have to be the best fit for everyone, but it is the best fit for me. I do not see why homeschool students should be excluded from the public high school sports because of their education. Even if I will never be welcomed to play on a public high school team, I want to do whatever I can for what I think is right. You have the ability to welcome me this upcoming school year, but even if it takes years and I never have the opportunity, I know others can benefit from this policy change. I would be overjoyed for my younger siblings to have that privilege. It is right to include us, and I will always stand up for that. Thank you.
Justin Slagel.
Thank you. My name is Justin Slagel, and I reside in College Station ISD. I'm also very proud of my daughter, who just spoke. She really strives for excellence, and I wanted to bring up an example of that. This summer, she actually set her alarm every morning, about 6:30 in the morning. She woke up, and she rode her bike over to Consolidated High School here to participate in the athletic program for the strength and conditioning. She did that every day, and then she rode her bike back home in the Texas heat. She plays softball and helps lead her team. In fact, this past season, she led her team to a championship, and she has several championship rings now to her name. Of course, I boast these achievements as a proud father, but there's another reason, too. She is ready for the next level of competition. As a ninth grader, she is eager to put on the A&amp;M Consolidated uniform and represent her community in the highest level of competition. Texas law invites homeschoolers to join their local school teams. However, the local school board needs to create a path for their inclusion. That's why we're here. We need you to create that path. Fortunately, UIL has already developed policies for the school district to follow. It is exceedingly simple, and the burden is mostly on the homeschooler. The homeschool family signs some paperwork, pays any fees if needed, submits to an annual test, which is administered by a third party, and submits grades every six weeks. Other than that, we follow the same rules as all the other athletes. I know you are proud of the education you provide to your students. Everyone we have gotten to know in the schools are good, caring people, and we know a lot of y'all that are here tonight. It was really good to see y'all here, too. All these recognitions were really, really great to see. I'm glad that you're recognizing everybody here. Our choice to homeschool is not an indictment on your school system, and I sincerely hope you don't take it that way. We invest our time and energy in giving our children a classical education, much in the same light as John Adams, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison. Much like our founding fathers, Latin rhetoric, logic, and debate are pillars of their education. Once again, my daughter's drive for excellence led her to win the local science fair, become a memory master, contributed to her team winning the mock trial event in the Brazos County courthouse, and even brings her here today as a confident 14-year-old, bold enough to speak to a room full of adults, and also trying to persuade you to do what she thinks is right. It is not that we don't trust the teachers at CSISD. If your daughter was experiencing this level of academic success, would you change her school just for athletics? This is an opportunity to choose unity over division. Let's talk and find a way to be more inclusive. I am here to help. If I need to volunteer, I'm happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Bales.
Howdy. I'm Dr. Joseph Bales. I'm a homeschooling father of five children between 5 and 14, one you've met tonight. My wife and I both went to public schools K through 12. We also both went on to be Division 1 athletes. We started homeschooling because as a physician, I got to spend a lot more time with my children since I work a lot of evenings and weekends. And we continued to homeschool because we've had great success and have loved to see our children thrive in our home. Our oldest son is in ninth grade, and he would love the opportunity to experience sports on a very competitive team. At some point, our kids may enroll in public school if they choose to. As you well aware, the opportunity is up to you. Now that 40 school districts in the state of Texas have allowed this to happen, and more than 35 states have also allowed it to happen, much, some for more than 25 years. I've spoken with homeschool families in other states, and it's really a non-issue. They've taken their required test, submit their required fees, they abide by the school policies, and submit report cards. Their kids play as if they're qualified to make the team. It's as simple as that. Homeschool families that do not want to fulfill these requirements just don't participate. This is not an issue that will go away. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, the Texas homeschool rate went from 4.5% in early 2020 before COVID-19 to an estimated 8% to 10% in this current school year. In other words, homeschool rates in Texas have doubled in the last four years and averaged 6% increase for the last 25 years. This means that College Station ISD is not allowing about 10% of its potential student population to participate in UIL activities, which are paid for by these same families. Can you imagine a public institution turning away 10% of its constituents that could be served? This decision is up to you. As homeschool parents, we are more than willing to lawfully submit to any requirements to allow for the participation in College Station ISD activities. This includes following school vaccination requirements, annual standardized testing, submitting report cards, providing transportation, paying necessary fees, ensuring standards of behavior, abiding by rules that are, such as not receiving instruction from a private coach during school hours outside of the 60-minute athletic period. We are already very active in our community and would be active members in any UIL activity. Thank you for opening up this topic for discussion, and I encourage you to think big picture. If you allow kids every opportunity to better themselves, our community will be better as well. Thank you.
Leo Tower.
Hello, my name is Leo Tower. I'm from AMCHS, and I'm a junior. I've been playing the violin since I was three years old, and my father introduced me to a world of music that few children actually get to experience. Due to that introduction, I do not expect everyone in the orchestra to be at my level, but I do expect all students in the varsity orchestra to be musically challenged, as I think you would actually commend and expect at the varsity level. To put my resolve in perspective, I tested out of eighth grade simply not to have to suffer at the hands of poor musical instruction.
Hold on, Mr. Tower. Can you stop the clock, executive? Thanks. We're not going to be derogatory towards teaching practices and things like that in front. However, I want to give you the opportunity to speak so we can go in closed session, and you can finish speaking with us, and then come back out if you'd like. It is a comment in regards to teaching practices of a teacher, and he's more than willing to share because he's addressing the board, and we can do that in closed session. You're more than welcome to come with him, and he can have the remaining of his three minutes, but this is how we're going to do this.
Okay.
So, you'd like to do that?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. We'll be back. All right, that'll bring us back to Consent Agenda. Those items are item G, H2, H3, J6, excuse me, J4, J5, J6, J7, J8, J9, and J10.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Second.
Motion by Ms. Ege, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further discussion or questions? All those opposed, say aye. Wait, did I say the backwards? Withdraw it now? Just, no? Oh, my gosh, I just went blank. Where did I leave? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Most cases, 6-0. Bring us to item H1, receive annual emergent bilingual ESL program report.
Good evening, Dr. Harkrider, President Horak, and members of the board. I'm thankful for the opportunity to present the Bilingual Education and ESL Programs Report this evening. If I can find the clicker. The presentation will cover an overview of the bilingual programs in College Station ISD, student demographic information, academic and English language proficiency progress, budget considerations, staffing, professional development, and we'll wrap it up with questions. As we get started, I wanted to share some quick facts about the demographics in the state of Texas. Approximately, well, 21% of the student population in Texas public schools are emergent bilingual students. Almost 5.5 million students are enrolled in Texas public schools. Texas serves just under 1 in 5 of the nation's emergent bilingual students, and 10% of emergent bilingual students are also receiving special education services. Languages spoken in Texas are 120-plus, 88% of that is Spanish, which is very reflective of our district. I took the top five languages in our district. 84% of our emergent bilingual students speak Spanish, followed by Vietnamese, Korean, Arabic, and Mandarin, run a close brace every year, anywhere between, they're 3% and 4% each day. I could probably run a report in, end of the year, and that will shift, but that's been pretty consistent over the past couple of years. In College Station ISD, we have two types of bilingual programs, and I call out that we are a bilingual Spanish program because across the state, we do have other types of bilingual programs. As you saw, Vietnamese is another language represented in Texas, but our programs are bilingual Spanish programs. In pre-K, we have a one-way immersion program, and for our K through 6 graders, we have a two-way dual-language immersion program. Our ESL program models for pre-K through 6 are English as a second language content-based, meaning that through all of their content areas, students receive support in acquiring academic English through all of the content areas, whereas at our secondary level, fourth grade, 7 through 12, it's called an ESL pullout model. That doesn't mean our kids are removed from the classroom. That means that their English language acquisition is focused in those English language courses. In our 9 through 12th graders, we have the added support for our students. Our other core content area teachers are trained in sheltered instruction, which also provides scaffolded support as students are acquiring not just the content, but also the language supports. And I did want to call out, as we talked about teacher certification, the teachers in our bilingual program, the expectation is for them to be bilingual certified or ESL certified, depending on how the model is run. But for our ESL program at the elementary level, all teachers are expected to be ESL certified if they're serving emergent bilingual students. And at the secondary level, that certification is focused highly on our English teachers and their English certified as well as ESL certified. Here's the growth over the past six years for students in our district that are emergent bilinguals. The blue line will show the overall enrollment of our emergent bilingual students. The red line is our ESL students, and the green line is our bilingual students. Any questions so far?
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, can you go back to it if you said a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just wanted to take a moment. So, lot of growth in emergent bilingual overall.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a blue. And then, so the ESL is the kids who, other than Spanish, basically.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. And then, so then the greenish is.
Yes. Well, actually, it could be some students who denied bilingual services and only wanted ESL services, because one fun fact is we have ESL programs on all of our 19 campuses, but only four of them serve our bilingual students. So, there are times when families will choose to deny services because they love their community, they love their neighborhood schools, so they will choose to stay there, but they do have support from their classroom teachers as well as ESL specialists. Yes, ma'am. Good question, because those two things often get confused, so thank you for that. Okay? And we're going to talk about the academic progress of our emergent bilingual students. The red indicates students who did not meet academic readiness standards, and don't let the green fool you because it says academic readiness for approaches, but that includes approaches, meets, and masters. So, one thing that we can note on our students in grades 3 through 8 is they are doing pretty well. If you'll notice, our students who have met reclassification status are really knocking it out of the park. In order to meet reclassification, they have to show fluency in English proficiency on their TELPA scores as well as academic readiness on their STAR state assessments, and our students in our bilingual program are doing pretty well as well. That's. And my secret little joy is that since 2017, our students have been scored with TELPUS by computerized scoring. So each year, if our teachers know our kids, and we've monitored those students, and we know that they are more proficient than the score shows, we submit a retest. And every year, about half of them come back with, yep, they were higher. So that's knowledge of our students and having that opportunity to have them rescored. So, and that's a comparison between our bilingual and ESL students. And I'll take this opportunity to share the difference in the goals for those two programs. Our bilingual students are expected to be biliterate. So that means not just acquiring academic English, but acquiring academic Spanish. So that's a little different, whereas our ESL students are on the trajectory to become English proficient. And here are our kids at the high school level, who are ESL students. Again, same composite scores, beginning, intermediate, advanced, and advanced high. They're making good progress. One of the things where we, one of the things I want to call out for you guys is, we have ESL specialists who serve as an additional support for our students. Their target is typically our non-English speakers, which they're not non-English speakers for a very long time, they're very excited, but they typically serve beginning and intermediate level students. So once they reach that advanced level, the support is minimal. So that's where we're noticing that they get stuck. They get stuck at that advanced level. We need to continue to support through the classroom, or through those sheltered instruction sections, to know that, yeah, they're advanced, but we need them to get advanced high. Okay? Any questions about our data so far? Okay, so, we talked about content and language. This is important because the goal is for our students, we've got many goals, but one of the goals is for our students to meet reclassification status. November of last year, the state changed that reclassification criteria. In years prior, in the areas of listening, speaking, reading, and writing, the expectation was for the students to be advanced high in all of those areas. That's tough to do. It's tough to do, and I love to use Sheri's quote, "It's a one snapshot, one day." It was one day in the life of a kid. So they made the change. Our guidance has changed to that English language proficiency level would be a composite score of advanced high. So it's taking those scores at different weights and coming with a composite score of advanced high. They still have to pass meet standard on a standardized reading assessment without any linguistic supports, and they have a subjective teacher evaluation. So these are the results in the number of students in our district who reclassified once that criteria has changed. So it's, while I celebrate, I have to take into account those few students who still may not be at that level of writing independently and at that academic level, because maybe they were just advanced, not advanced high. So we're going to need to continue to support them in that way, so.
So you're saying that, that big jump from the previous year was really because of the way the state changed the classification?
Yes, ma'am. Not to dismiss their hard work, but when you think of someone who is acquiring a second language, and they are held at a little bit of a higher standard than a native English speaker, it's, you just kind of start to wonder, like, is it equitable? Is this what's right and best for kids? I'm at our secondary level, if they do need additional support, it may take away an elective, something that helps connect them to school. So it's like you're doing the best you can, and you're right there, but you're just not reaching that advanced high in every single area.
So it sounds like you're saying this was a positive change?
Oh, yes, but wait, there's more. Yes, ma'am. It is, it is a positive change. So, like TEA likes to do, this announcement actually came up the day before our LPEC training, and we were like, yes, just in time. So just as the state changed the expectation for TELPUS scores of getting an advanced high composite, they are now allowing linguistic accommodations for all students who are emergent bilinguals, including our denials. One thing about denials is if a parent says, nope, we don't want ESL services, we don't want bilingual services, we communicate to them the benefits, the pros and the cons. Again, families have reasons for denying services, then all we do is monitor them, and we communicate with them. They, we don't receive funding for them, which, to me, I know it's important, but it's, we don't receive funding for them, but they also don't get the support they need. So this allows us to support those students, whether they accept the services or not. For me, it's like doing what's right for kids. And one of the struggles as an educator that you have, yes, ma'am, you want to provide accommodations so students can be successful, but prior to this year, if I provide support to those students, they may not meet reclassification status. So again, another positive change, but it's going to involve a lot of educating our teachers on the appropriate use of those accommodations, because I can give them to a student, but if they don't use them, just like a dictionary, that was like the be-all, end-all, give the kids a dictionary. Do you know how hard it is to use a dictionary when you don't know words? You're like, look up celebration, an occasion on which something celebratory happens. I don't know what half of those words mean, so I'm spending so much time, you know, looking at a dictionary, but if you can provide some linguistic supports, that's helpful. If they know how to use them, even better. Any other questions? You see, August 24th. I can tell you it was the 22nd when I got that email. We were trained on the 23rd, so. Okay? Anything? Okay. How does all the magic happen? We have approximately $1.6 million that we use to close that gap on English language acquisition. How do we serve these students? We talked a little bit about teacher certification. In our dual-language program, the expectation is for our teachers to be bilingual certified. We talked a little bit about the caveats, but we currently have 46 teachers serving in those classrooms. 36 are fully bilingual certified, 6 are ESL certified, but whippersnappers with Spanish-speaking, and 4 have certifications in progress. That includes our alternative certification teachers, teachers from other states, teachers from other countries. When you talk about getting certified in Texas, it is a challenge. It is a challenge. Additional staff to support our emergent bilingual students is, each of our elementary campuses that has a dual-language program has a bilingual reading interventionist. We have one bilingual special education teacher, two district bilingual coaches, one bilingual instructional assistants that are used at a variety of levels. We have intervention time, so they're helping everyone, and one coordinator of language acquisition. As far as our ESL programs, we have 17 ESL specialists or teachers. They help with compliance, they help with serving our students. 13 of those are full-time. For part-time, back to our ESL staff at the elementary level, where the expectation is that the four core teachers are certified, if they're certified in ESL, if they're serving emergent bilinguals. We currently have 283 at our secondary level. We have 51 teachers who are certified in English as well as ESL certified, and this is going to be my shout-out to my secondary principals, because we made the move to really push forward with those sheltered instructions sections at the secondary level. We asked for maybe, hey, send us like 4, 6, 8, you know, that's what we'll get. We were able to train 75 of those teachers. They were so excited, oh, you know, they, there are many strategies that they do, we just called it back to their attention to be intentional with it. One of the easiest strategies you can use is have a visual. Well, I can hang it up, but if I never refer to it, it's just wallpaper. They're like, oh, yeah, I need to refer to it. So just these simple things, calling them out to the teachers so that they can meet the needs of the kids with things they are already doing, just being a little more intentional. Okay? Teacher certifications. If we are unable to secure a sufficient number of appropriately certified teachers, either bilingual or ESL teachers, we submit a waiver. So we will. We will have to do that again this year, and our numbers will reflect very much like last year. Last year, we submitted for 50 teachers. Eight of those teachers successfully obtained the required certification. Six of those teachers were reimbursed for their successful completion. That's one of the things that we started last year. It's really hard, the tests are hard. I do not recommend anyone to just go in cold turkey. I want you to study, I want you to have the appropriate supports that you need to be successful to serve our kids. Many have taken the opportunity to get reimbursed for that teacher certification test, and 15 of those are no longer in the district, and I'm excited teachers know that we're looking at those lists again, so they're like, hey, let me work on that. So we're doing good with getting those teachers certified. And professional development that we're offering this year with our PLCs and collaborative team meetings, much of that's embedded. We have the strategy of toma la palabra for our bilingual classes. We continue with our compliance training at the beginning, middle, and end of the year, and as our state assessments happen. Teacher certification training is all differentiated, even for adults, they can do in-house, online, or right here at Texas A&amp;M. We'll be continuing the sheltered instruction training for our secondary teachers. Two new things are, we are utilizing iStation for our bil literacy component for our bilingual program, loss links for monitoring in Spanish language, and secondary work, we'll continue to work with Dr. Jose Luis Zelaya, who's like one of the specialists in serving newcomers. And so our next steps, this is another thing that's coming up, we recently went through a program review to evaluate our compliance practices, as well as keeping up with all of the new guidance from TEA. So we expect that feedback on October 31st, and we'll start rolling with some of those things as they come. Back to those content and language supports to help our emergent bilinguals being more successful on STAR and meeting reclassification criteria will be there. That group of kids that we have that are long-term emergent bilinguals, digging down into what is it that the kids need, I mentioned a little bit about how, once they're intermediate, like their level, their targeted level of support is different, so we're going to look into that. Our ESL specialists continue to do goal setting with our students. We will have an MOY, an end-of-the-year Spanish language proficiency assessment. We've expanded our summer offerings in evaluating the effectiveness of our new tools. Chapter 89, which is our guidance, is in its final review. It's set to go, you know, whole hog, January 2025, so that, along with our program review, are going to impact some changes, as well as educating our parents, because regardless of the role I've ever been in, I feel like first and foremost, my job is to give parents information to make the best decisions they can for their students. So those are our next steps, and if you have any questions, I have a pen, I can answer them for you by the next board meeting.
I've always wondered, like, when you see that increase in the Vietnamese and the Korean, what's the threshold where we're going to have to start offering support in those languages?
Good question. Our guidance is, if we have 20 students of a language other than English at one grade level, we will be required to offer a Vietnamese program. And, and fun fact, TEA actually does have a Vietnamese bilingual certified teacher test.
Well, that's what, so my undergrad is in linguistics, and what I've always wondered, when you're talking about the certification, because that's a lot of steps. Imagine I'm a young student in Chile, University of Santiago, I'm a qualified teacher in Chile. I meet a nice Aggie abroad, decide to move back here. I speak English, so I'm a certified teacher, I speak Spanish. I can't teach in an ESL program.
You can, you're just not appropriately certified.
Okay.
That's the, that's the thing. We hire some amazing people with some great skills that meet the needs of our students, and we work with them to get that certification.
And then conversely, since Texas has a large Spanish-speaking population, if I'm a certified Texan teacher, but I grew up speaking Spanish, I have to get an additional certification.
You get to take two additional tests.
That's part of the issue, the rigor of that particular test is extremely difficult.
Okay, because I did, can they, they can't take TOEFL or something to prove that they're, that's my thing, there's other ways to do that.
Yeah, they won't, they won't recognize that. That's why we need some leeway.
It's good enough for the, for the university crowd to take TOEFL, but not for the TEA.
TOEFL is a prereq for your teacher certification exams.
And I want to follow up on that with a question, because, I mean, I appreciate the program that, you know, once they go through the class and get certified, that we are refund, or paying for that, right?
If they're passed certified tests.
If they pass. So, I mean, is this out of, is that out of district?
That's out of our funds.
That is, but it's still out of...
Yes.
I mean...
But it's money well spent, I'm telling you.
I, I, yes. I think, and I don't know if there's other places within the district where we are helping existing teachers get certified and helping fund that. I think there may be some others, but I mean, I also believe that with the legislature, that should be something that the state should be supporting in high-need areas, right? I mean, not only is it a difficult test, but it's also a good chunk of money to go through that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, to me, that seems like a no-brainer to support those two, the high-needs areas especially, but.
Yes, ma'am.
I did have one question on the growth, just in general. I was trying to understand, I are just, so we've had a number, a good bit of growth in the emergent bilingual in general. Have you seen it in, across grade levels, or is it more in, is it changed recently?
It's across grade levels. I can tell you, I helped at College Station High School with the, with the beginning of the year, LPEC meetings identifying students, and I was shocked that the number was so small, and I'm going to knock on wood right now, I was shocked that the number was not as large as it was the year before. There were approximately 24 to 26 students that were new, that were emergent bilinguals, that had different types of schooling, but once we drilled down, they weren't newcomers. They were, you know, so it just ebbs and flows.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to J1. We're going to open our public hearing for the 2024 first report. Ms. Wilson.
Sorry, Mr. Neely.
Well, I was just saying, they put up the camera before I even had a chance to go, so maybe, maybe next time, so.
Can we go get Anna Maynard back and get her back here, so she's, so he can be on TV? Somebody go put this on YouTube?
Right. Hey, well, good evening, Dr. Harkrider, President Horak, members of the board. You know, before I kind of go into some pre-rant notes, oh, yeah, I guess we need the... The rigor of that particular test is extremely difficult.
Okay, because I did, can they, they can't take TOEFL or something to prove that they're, that, that's my thing. There's other ways to do that.
Yeah, they won't, they won't recognize that. That's why we need some leeway.
It's good enough for the, for the university crowd to take TOEFL, but not for the TEA.
The TOEFL is a prereq for your teacher certification exams.
And I want to follow up on that with a question because, I mean, I appreciate the program that, you know, once they go through the class and, and get certified, that we are refund or paying for that, right?
If they're past certified test.
If they pass. So, I mean, is this out of, is that out of district?
That's out of our funds.
That is, but it's still out of?
Yes.
I mean.
But it's money well spent, I'm telling you.
Yes. I think, and I don't know if there's other places within the district where we are helping existing teachers get certified and helping fund that. I think there may be some others, but I mean, I also believe that with the legislature, that should be something that the state should be supporting in high need areas, right? I mean, not only is it a difficult test, but it's also a good chunk of money to go, go through that. So, I mean, to me, that seems like a no brainer to support those two, the high needs areas especially, but.
Yes.
I, I did have one question on the growth, just in general. I was trying to understand, I are just, so we've had a number, a good bit of growth in the emergent bilingual in general. Have you seen it in across grade levels or is it more in, is it changed recently?
It's across grade levels. I can tell you, I helped at College Station High School with the, with the beginning of the year, ElPEC meetings identifying students. And I was shocked that the number was so small, and I'm going to knock on wood right now, I was shocked that the number was not as large as it was the year before. There were approximately 24 to 26 students that were new, that were emergent bilinguals, that had different types of schooling. But once we drilled down, they weren't newcomers. They were, you know, that, so it just ebbs and flows.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to J1. We're going to open our public hearing for the 2024 first report. Sorry, Mr. Neely.
Well, I was just saying, they put up the camera before I even had a chance to go. So maybe, maybe next time, so.
Can we go get Anna Maynard back and get her back here so she's, so he can be on TV? Somebody go put this on YouTube?
Right. Hey, well, good evening, Dr. Harkrider, President Horak, members of the board. You know, before I kind of go into some pre-grant notes, oh, yeah, I guess we need the slides. But I did want to just remind everybody that accounting is fun and the first rating is fun. So please remember that as we kind of work through the presentation, we'll try to be a little bit more lively than last year because I noticed people were, were dozing off when I was talking. So, so tonight Heather and I will be going through the public hearing to go over our district's 2023, 2024 first rating. The first, which stands for Financial Accountability Rating System of Texas, was developed in consultation with the Comptroller of Public Accounts. This rating system not only created indicators on which the district's financial accountability rating is based, but it also imposed reporting and hearing requirements for the district. So the hearing requirements are being met as part of this public hearing and the reporting requirements will be posted on the district's website. The 2023, 2024 school first rating is based upon staff and student data as well as financial data reported for the prior fiscal year, which in this case would be the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. So it's a little bit unique because we're, again, it's a 23, 24 first rating, but because of the timing of when our prior year audit was completed and, and the requirement to consolidate all the information, right, there's, there's a little bit of a lag period. So again, it's 22, 23 data for the 23, 24 report. When looking at the indicators established by the accountability system, there are 21 total indicators. Of these 21 indicators, the first four are considered critical indicators. And then beyond that, there are seven additional indicators that are considered ceiling indicators. The, the importance of the four critical indicators is that if you fail any, or if you miss any one of those four indicators and you essentially fail the rating system for the ceiling indicators, if you don't meet one of those indicators, then you essentially cap yourself at a certain point total. So indicators one through four are critical indicators and then ceiling indicators are four, five, six, 16, 17, 20, and 21. And so Heather and I will, will go through those a little bit more in depth, but that's a, just a quick overview. So first going through our critical indicators. So indicator one, which is a pretty much a simple indicator in terms of it's just looking at our annual financial report and whether or not we submitted that to TEA by our deadline, which is January 28th. The district successfully passed that by submitting it earlier in January. Indicator two, again, fairly straightforward. It just looks at our annual audited financial report and looks to see if we had an unmodified opinion, which for our 22, 23 audited financial report, we had an unmodified opinion. Critical indicator three was the school district in compliance with the payment terms of all debt agreements at fiscal year end. And this is just looking at, did we meet our obligations in a timely manner, which we did again in the 22, 23 year. And then critical indicator number four, did the school district make timely payments to the teacher retirement system, the Texas Workforce Commission, Internal Revenue Service, and other government agencies, which we, we did. There's also, the indicator four has kind of two caveats. So the first caveat is the critical. So if we failed that first, the first aspect, or even on the warrant hold aspect, if we didn't meet our payment terms within 30 days, the warrant hold was issued, we would, we would fail it. But if you're issued a warrant hold and you make the payments within 30 days, then you fail the ceiling indicator, which means your max score is capped at 95. But in, in either case, we met both conditions and so we had, we had no issues there. So then moving on from our critical indicators, we're looking at fiscal responsibility. And so, and really I kind of consider the additional, the other indicators more solvency based. So indicator five, essentially this indicator determines if the total net position in the government activities columns of the statement of net position as reported on the annual financial report is greater than zero. So when, when we calculated out that detail, and let me pull up my notes. Yeah, our net position was well over zero. I think we're about 127 million. So not, not too close on, on that one in terms of any concerns. Indicator number six, where the indicator measures that the percentage change in fund balance to see whether the fund balance is declining too quickly. And if it is declining, whether sufficient fund balance remains to operate for at least 75 days. So when we looked at the data for indicator number six, over the last three years, our fund balances actually increased. So again, what they're looking at is, you know, you can have a 25% increase, but we're, we're good on that end. And then in terms of the 75 days of operational expenditures, we were well over, well over that mark as well. Indicator seven was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund for school districts sufficient to cover operating expenditures. Again, we're well over the, the, the upper threshold of the limit, which is greater than 90 days. We had 121 days of, of funds on hand in order to meet operating expenditures. Indicator eight was the measure of current assets to current liability ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt. Again, we, the, the upper threshold of that is you need to be equal to or greater than three. And College Station ISD, our current liabilities to short-term debt ratio was 3.19. So again, we exceeded that and earned max points on indicator number eight. Indicator number nine, did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? If not, was the school district's number of days of cash on hand greater than or equal to 60 days? And on that indicator, yeah, we passed both aspects again. We had 121 days of cash on hand, which is greater than the, the 60-day requirement. And we also met the, the first threshold as well. And then indicator number 10 is not currently being scored as part of the first rating. And for the remaining indicators, I will turn it over to Heather.
All right. So we're going to look at some debt indicators. When you look at indicator, indicator number 11, it's basically looking at the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets. Is it sufficient to pay our debt? What you kind of look at with this indicator is kind of your mortgage and to make sure that your, your market value of your home is not going down. And so you're kind of looking at that. The thing about this indicator is that you have two ways to pass. The first way is to get it above 7% or the other way is to have more than 7% growth. So our district was just a little over 7% growth, therefore we scored all 10 points. If our district was not over 7% in growth, we would have scored an eight on this indicator. However, because we're growing, we, we scored a 10. And the reason why that is just the total debt. I'm going to show you one more indicator. So if we look at this one, this is what's the debt per hundred of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments. One, one thing about this indicator that really kind of upsets me in a sense, and then I've also talked to TEA about it, is because of the fact that, as you know, as the school district, we can raise our tax rate up to 50 cents. Our tax rate right now is 27.6 cents. So we have a very low tax rate and we have great property value and we have a greater than, we've got full 10 points on this. We're at 2.58. But as you know, we're paying, we're selling bonds right now for our next bond program. And so we're going to have to kind of monitor this one because in the future, you're going to see where this one starts to trigger down just a little. We won't ever lose more than eight points, but I can see in two years, once we've sold all the debt, we're going to be a little bit lower. But it has nothing to do really with our repayment of our debt because our tax rate is only 27.6 cents. We can go up to 50 cents. So this is why I've argued with TEA on this one because of the fact that I don't think it makes sense. But anyway, that's what, I shouldn't say that. Chris is encouraging me over here. Indicator 13, administrative cost ratio, equal to or less than the threshold ratio. When you look at your, your administrative cost ratio, what's kind of funny about this one is you're looking at your total cost of administration. So we're not looking at the number of people we have, we're looking at the cost of those people. And we're lower than we're supposed to, the high, the most you can go point 0855 or above than, I mean, or below, excuse me, you get 10 points and we're point 0742. I'm very proud of that number. This is kind of a look because just you can kind of see how it falls in and out and we're well above those 10 points. So that's pretty exciting for College Station ISD. Did the school district not have a 15% decline in students to staff ratio over three years? The thing about this is we did not. We grew in students, so you don't have to worry about this indicator because we automatically pass it. However, if we wouldn't have passed it, we were like 7.15 and 7.03. So you can see where we're really kind of staying on that student to staff ratio. Indicator 15, was the school district's ADA within the allotted range for district bilennial pupil projection submitted to TEA? Now, they're not scoring this one right now because they're still giving us grace on COVID because it's kind of, we've had a lot of unknowns since we came back from COVID on estimating enrollment, but our district would have passed it. Indicator 16, ceiling, and it's the comparison of PMS data to information on the annual financial report. And what they want to make sure that we're doing is what you're seeing and improving on your annual financial report matches what our accounting system says and matches what gets submitted into PMS. And so they're trying to make sure we're all accurate with our data. And I hate to say, we were $203 off of 140 million. That's called rounding and so we passed that. So we're point 03. Did the external, yes, sir? Oh, gosh. It's our data system that we submit all of our information into TEA and I'm blanking. I shouldn't be. Pupil, um, gosh.
Actually, the, the, your first part of that sentence, I think, answered it though.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, the exact acronym, I'm not, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I've gone blank. It's accounting for your students on your campus. But yes, that's how we submit all of our information into TEA. So in PMS, we actually submit our financial data. We submit our student data accountability gets submitted, our staffing data gets submitted into TEA. And that's how they view us. That's how they, they take our accountability. That's how they know what we're doing in our district is what we submit through PMS. So it's very important. And so we are doing really well there. Indicator 18, did the external independent auditor report, annual financial report of any instances of non-compliance for grants, contracts, laws related to local, state, and federal funds? This is really exciting. We have a wonderful curriculum and instruction department. They work really well with the business office and they make sure that we're in compliance with all of our grants and that we don't get written up in our audit. So that's exciting. We didn't have any, we get our full 10 points. The next one is, did the school district post the required financial information on the website? And yes, we've got everything that our, all of our required postings are on the website and up to date. Five's your max points there, so we're in compliance. So did administration and school board members discuss any changes or any impacts to local, state, and federal funding at a board meeting within 120 days? Do you guys remember any accounting can be fund discussions? So yes, we do that on a regular basis. Ms. Drows and Mr. Neely have been doing that for a while. And then our final indicator is, did the school district receive an adjusted repayment schedule for more than one fiscal year for over allocations of the funding, oh my goodness, the FSP funds because of a financial hardship? The answer is no, we did not. That's when school districts go ahead and increase their enrollment, receive those funds, but then can't pay them back to TEA. So they put them on a payment plan and we have not had that at our school district. So when first was put out, that was, first was really kind of put out just to kind of monitor school districts and then get on TEA's radar if we look like we're in financial hardship. Okay? So the perfect thing about College Station ISD is we made 100. Now, Chris wanted just to walk up here and say, we made 100, drop the mitt and walk out. But I really don't think that that would be appropriate because we kind of have to talk about each indicator. So I kind of discouraged that, sorry. But our district did make 100 on our first string. Does anybody have any questions?
Just for, just for emphasis in the record, I wanted to turn to item number 13 because as a discussion workshop, it's common slander from those proposed public education that we're blowing out our administrative expenses. And we really should get about 12 points because our, the, the 7% administrative costs, it's a common thing you'll hear is that we're spending a lot of administrative contracts and we've, we've made new positions, we've filled in administrative gaps, we can provide the quality of service our district deserves and a cost effective ratio. So thank you, great job.
Well, that was them, but you bet.
All right. Any questions?
No, just more kudos to the team and of course to Ms. Ross because, I mean, and, and Mr. Neely for, I mean, everybody on the team for all the work that gets us to this. That's pretty impressive to get a.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
That will close our public hearing. Item J2, consider the nomination of representatives to the Brazos Central Appraisal District Board through resolution to begin January 1st, 2025.
In the second special session of the 88th Legislature, Senate Bill 2 changed kind of how this works. So now basically it's up to the board. If you would like to nominate someone to appear on the ballot, you can nominate someone. If you don't want to, that's fine. The slate will be put forward and then the board will decide at another meeting how we will divvy out our 1,345 total votes. So if you have someone that you would like to nominate, you can, there'll be a resolution to approve that. If you do not have anybody, you do not have to. And then we wait for the slate and then divvy up our votes.
Do these people need to know if they're being nominated tonight?
I don't have a vote, so that's totally up to the six of you guys. I would say probably so, but like I said.
Kind of like a reference check, you wanted to call beforehand?
This is tonight our deadline to nominate.
Okay. Does anybody have anybody? Or just want to be mean to somebody you know?
No, but like, would, can you clarify since if we are not nominating somebody, do we know what the process will be?
You've got other entities are doing the same thing that we're doing. And then, you know, yeah, there's, I mean, there's a chance based on this change because they wanted some of these positions elected, that it could be prominent problematic because a lot of folks don't care to even, to serve. And so that's the question that there's not enough for a slate, what are they going to do? Yeah.
Can they, if we nominate them tonight, can they refuse the nomination? And the reason I ask is I, I've, one person that I, I did discuss this with and they've been in the process of talking, you know, to family and obviously the appraisal district.
We could do, I mean, if you wanted to, I'm sure we could probably do the resolution and then tell them they're not interested. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but this is being brand new, this is first year because of how they changed the law, whatever. I mean, it's got, yeah, it's kind of up to you, Josh. I mean, we can always do the resolution. If we, I would assume we could probably come back and amend it if we needed to, to strike it if they chose not to be nominated or not to accept the nomination. Okay?
Um, well, I've got, I've got a nomination.
Okay.
So I nominate a gentleman by the name of Mark Dear. He's a financial advisor here in town, lives in College Station ISD, has a couple of kids in the district.
Okay. Do we have to have action on that? Yeah, we do. Anybody in the audience want to be nominated just by chance? Anyone? Speak now for whoever, hold your peace, so.
Basically what the action item would be to approve a resolution nominating Mr. Dear, Mike Dear, as candidate for Brazos County Appraisal District Board of Directors, Brazos County, Texas.
It's Mark.
Mark, okay. Do you want to do that motion?
Sure.
He can cuss me out if his wife says no.
This is real good. I love these new laws.
Yes. I'd move to nominate Mark Dear as a candidate for membership on the Brazos Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ben, second by Ms. Eege. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries six, zero. Bring it to item J3, consider approval of a no-fee contract for taxable value audits, property value studies between College Station Independent School District and McLeary, Valesk, Vasilka, Bragg, and Allen, PC.
Sure. In order to maximize state funding, our district is, has the opportunity to file property value studies as well as look at taxable value audits for three years. In the past, we pay for these services. However, McQuary, Vasilka, Bragg, Allen, PC are our delinquent tax attorneys. And with that, delinquent tax attorneys, they offer these services for free. So what our district would like to do is utilize that lawyer firm, attorney firm, excuse me, to offer these services. Do you have any questions?
Do you need a motion?
I move to approve as presented.
Second, second by Ms., or motion by Ms. Simmons, second by Mr. Decker. Any further questions or comments?
I was just going to say, due to our professional relationship, I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. That will bring us to item K1, consider approval authorizing final negotiations for the construction manager at risk for the high school stadium's additions and renovations project. Mr. Buckner.
All right. First, I want to say thank you to the voters for the passing of the May 2024 athletics bond. And from that bond, one of the priority projects is the high school addition, high school stadium additions and renovations, which has projects at both A and M Consolidated, as well as College Station High School. This past summer, the Board of Trustees, y'all approved the procurement method as construction manager at risk for this project. Once that was approved, we released that for proposals and opened proposals September 24th. And from that, we received six responses to that proposal. After evaluations and scoring of those six responses, Jacody Construction was determined to be the best value for the district for this project. As you recall, Jacody is currently the general contractor for the middle school athletics project that kicked off last week at College Station Middle School, and they have now moved to Welburn Middle School as of today to start replacing the turf at both of those campuses, and will soon move to Consolidated Middle School in the next couple of weeks. That project is going very, very quickly right now with all the great weather. We are getting, knock on wood, it stays this way. So, but with that being said, it is recommended for Jacody Construction to serve as construction manager at risk for this project for the high school stadiums.
Any questions? Motion?
I motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Ms. Eege, second by Mr. Decker. Any comments or questions?
I was just going to, unfortunately, I'm going to also abstain on this one for the same reason.
All righty. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Buckner.
Thank y'all.
That will bring us to item L, executive session, and then we will be back. Thank y'all for being here. Enjoy the rest of the week, and the cold front tomorrow. All right, we're back in open session.
I move to uphold, oh, hold on, the recommendation of the school attorney to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a settlement for docket number 321-SE-0524.
Second.
All those, any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
I move to uphold the recommendation of the school attorney to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a settlement for docket number 027-SE-0924.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Simmons, second by Mr. Ben. Any questions, comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. That'll bring us to item N, adjourned. Thank y'all.